All right, good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, April 25th, 2023 Tingsboro School Committee Meeting. My name is Becky Stanton and I call this meeting to order. Please be reminded that these meetings are audio and video recorded. Would everyone please rise for Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with introductions with Nate.
Hi, Nate Moreno, Student Representative.
Jeff Boe.
Mike Woodlock, Assistant Superintendent. Mike Flanagan, Superintendent.
Anthony Terrell.
Ryan McMahon.
Danielle Athanas.
Rob Mullen.
Good evening, Joe Messina, School Business Administrator.
Thank you. I'll seek a motion to approve the minutes from the April 11th, 2023 School Committee Meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? That carries 600. Citizen time. Other than the elementary school students, do we have any citizens here to speak? That looks like a no. Correspondence?
None at this time, don't you?
And it looks like there's no personnel at this time.
Correct.
Nate, share the success.
Yes, very brief tonight. No elementary school update because evidently we have plenty of elementary schools here to talk about that, so. At TMS though, eighth graders had a great trip to Washington DC last week. They had 106 students and chaperones attend that, so that was great. The eighth graders who didn't attend that trip, they took part in a staycation at TMS. They also went on two enjoyable field trips during the week, so multiple options there for them. And then just MCAS testing will be continuing there for all three grades in the coming weeks. At THS, spring sports are in full swing with a number of teams projected to qualify for the state tournament in the coming weeks, which is awesome to hear. And then also end of the year events for the class of 2023 will begin in May. THS looks forward to celebrating and recognizing the class at such events as the Academic Excellence Award Ceremony, Senior Awards Night, and graduation, so that's all coming up to look forward to. And then just all the administrators hope that everyone had a great April break, and that's it.
Great, thanks Nate. I'll seek a motion to take item 9A out of order.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain? That carries 600. We'll hand it over to the elementary school students. And Mrs. Kavanagh, if you want to introduce the students.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for allowing us to come tonight. So for the last 10 years, I think we've been invited to present in the fall. Typically in the fall, we present with, we talk about things that we're excited for in the school year. This year, I feel like this invitation is extra special because we're coming in the spring to tell you about all the things the students have learned over the course of the year. So I am not going to introduce them because they're going to introduce themselves, but I will tell you that these six students were recommended by the Student Council Advisors, Mrs. Rowe, Ms. Morin, and Mrs. Reichardt. So we thank them for their support with our Student Council at TES. So I'm going to turn it over to the students.
Thank you.
Good evening. We are excited to be here tonight to show what has been going on at TES. We will start by introducing ourselves.
My name is Justin Ford and I'm a student in Mr. Stanley's class.
My name is Gwen Corkalakis and I'm a fourth grader in Mrs. Vieris' class.
My name is Aiden Maude and I'm in Mrs. Vieris' class.
My name is Wesley Amir and I am Mrs. Vieris' class.
My name is Audrey McCoy and I'm in Mr. Stewart's class.
My name is Caroline Demari. I'm in Miss Vieris' class.
We are all members of the Tingsboro Elementary School Student Council and we're chosen by our advisors to present to you tonight. We are all very excited and a little nervous to tell you what has been going on at TES. Last week, we reached our TES, we reached out to our TES community to help with this presentation. Everyone was excited to participate and share what they are doing in their classrooms.
The last time we were here, we were looking forward to opening our new playgrounds. We were happy to report that the playgrounds have built up to the height. We find that a lot of kids really like the spider swing. I would describe it as a tire swing, but instead of a tire, it has ropes like a spider's web. The hexagons have lots of functions. You can climb on top of them or use them as monkey bars. Overall, everyone at TES is really enjoying the new playground equipment.
We checked in with Mrs. Gothier for the upcoming second grade spring concert. It is going to take place on Tuesday, June 6th, at 9:30 AM. The second grade is learning about fables, so she has put together a program called an Aesop Adventure. Guests will be entertained with fables and songs that always have a moral to the story.
Pre-K has been busy exploring shapes and using them to sort, count, and graph. They are listening for letter sounds and rhyming words and moving to their favorite songs like Sticky Bubble Gum and All I Want to Do is Dance. They are learning how to get along with one another, solving problems with the help of their teachers, and building structures together. They enjoy pretending they are in a jungle, under the sea, and even in a dentist office. They are really looking forward to a visit from the Pumpernickel Puppets later this week.
Kindergartners have gained confidence in tapping and blending words with strategies they have learned through our foundations and foundational skills block. The Spring Queen came for a visit and the students absolutely loved it. She sang songs, taught them dances, and it was such an interactive, fun experience for the kids. In science, they're learning all about weather, and in social studies, they just finished a unit on neighborhoods. They're working on how-to writing and the connection between what they are reading and their writing. In reading, they have been focusing on learning about diverse cultures in the United States, reading books about Presidents' Day, Martin Luther King Jr. and baseball in America and Japan. They are about to start a math unit on composing and decomposing numbers to 20.
The first grade, the first graders continue to be eager to learn an everyday class. In reading, students are continuing to apply decoding skills taught in their everyday reading and are working on personal narratives and poetry during writing time. They're finishing up challenging addition and subtraction problems and will be moving on to, and will move, will be moving on to place value soon. They're enjoying science, focusing on life science with plants and animals, and are continuing to learn how to be a part of a community through their social studies curriculum. They are currently reading about national holidays and how our life is different from the past and how it is the same.
One of the highlights of the second grade is when a class fills their fuzzy jar. By showing kindness, they get to vote on a special day. Recently, one class voted to have a pajama day and watch a movie because they had filled their kindness jar. The students also report that they love to visit the PTO school store, which was open on Thursdays during the month of March. Second graders are using their Chromebooks and an app called Book Creator to publish a fictional story that they wrote. In math, they are working with three-digit numbers up to 1,000, including calculations. They are reading about important people and how experiences shape their lives and learning about the elements of poetry in order to write their own poems. In science, they are making changes to matter, exploring mixtures and the states of matter.
Each day, we watch the TES news, which is recorded by our fifth graders. Each home room gets a chance throughout the year to record the news for the day. We announce birthdays, recite the pledge, and have special days of the week. One of our favorite days is It Takes Two Tuesdays, where we showcase pictures sent in from staff members of students at TES showing their stripes and using teamwork to solve problems. The news is definitely something each grade looks forward to when they become fifth graders.
During March, third grade, third grade students have been working on writing an imaginative story. They've enjoyed creating their own characters, setting, and plot. In math, they completed multiplication and division and are beginning to work with fractions, which is a new concept for them. Third graders will meet the pilgrims and will meet the Puritans before learning more about the American Revolution and social studies. Weather, climate, and natural disasters have been their focus in science, and students are loving it. Next up for third grade is a biography research project that will result in one of the TES' favorite annual events, the Wax Museum. Students will be choosing a historical figure to write a biography about and create a display for. Some students will choose to dress in a costume, and all students will stand as wax figures and verbally report on their lives to the parents, guardians, and other visitors. Third graders can hardly wait for this amazing event.
Fourth graders recently went on a field trip to the Lowell Mills. Students report that they enjoyed learning about the mills, and some students even pretended to be a mill worker. The entire fourth grade also just finished reading Tiger Ratsing and are learning how to identify the main idea of the text. They completed a narrative fiction story by retelling the tale of two beasts from the beast's perspective. It was a blast. Fourth graders enjoyed the March Madness Funniest Picture Book Competition, in which the book with the pictures won. It was the first time we did something like that, and we hope to do it again. The math curriculum is taking us through factors and multiples. We made Play-Doh by practicing multiplying fractions. Fourth graders are also learning note-taking strategy while talking about geography in the Western region. We recently completed research projects related to the Southwest region.
Fifth graders had a very exciting last month of school. Our classes were able to have an in-school field trip presented on Birds of Prey. The wingmasters brought several owls and a falcon in. We got to see firsthand how these animals have adapted in our part of our ecosystem. Our classes have been very busy working on creating visual models for dividing fractions and what strategies work best at finding irregular presumps. Students have been learning about the geosphere, hydrosphere, atmosphere, and biosphere and how they all have an effect on each other. In LA, we've been writing summaries, practicing uses the racist format to answer open response questions, writing text-based opinion essays, and participating in a March Madness Picture Book Challenge.
The end of the year is usually filled with fun activities and events, and this year does not disappoint. On Wednesday, May 3rd, Mrs. Wells and the English Language Learner Department is hosting a celebration of Us Night at TES. This will be an opportunity for attendees to learn more about the cultures and families within our Tingsboro community. Many families have signed up to host a table telling more about their home country. Members of the community will also be participating through dance and food.
Looking ahead, we have our big annual TES Science Expo, Art Show, and Pasta Dinner. Thursday, May 11th, the hallways of TES are transformed into an art exhibit. Ms. Anderson, our art teacher, displays a piece of art for every student in preschool through grade five.
Also that night, the gym is transformed to a science extravaganza with the help of Ms. Maraca. Students in grades four and five who sign up to participate have been working since March on their science projects. Attendees will have the opportunity to visit each display and learn more about the various projects.
If people are interested in the pasta dinner, which will be prepared by Maeve's Kitchen, there is a Google form that they can fill out to make a reservation. The PTO will also have raffle baskets and a concession stand that night. The event kicks off at 5:00 PM.
We can't end our presentation without talking about the end of the school year. One of our favorite days is the TES Field Day, which will take place June 7th. There is also an end-of-the-year barbecue for families on June 8th. Our Grade Five Moving On Celebration will be June 13th. We can't believe our time at TES is coming to a close. One of my favorite memories of my time at TES was making it black in first grade.
One of my favorite memories at my time at TES was presenting the Lambard Project in fourth grade.
One of my favorite memories of my time at TES was during COVID-19, whenever my third-grade teacher, Mrs. Triscata, left to Google me by accident. I said that, I said that she had put us in a digital trash can.
One of my favorite memories of my time at TES was last year when we went to the Lowell Mills.
One of my favorite memories of my time at TES was awesome PTO events.
We would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the staff members who are retiring this year. We would like to thank them for their years of service and dedication to our students. We wish them the best as they enter their retirement. Gail Berger, Valerie Dagley, Ellen O'Neill, Denise Patonella, Laura Tomkins, Donna Walker, Betsy McCarthy, and Liz Gill. We would also like to thank Dr. Flanagan, Mr. Woodlock, Mr. Messina, Nate Moreno, and dedicated School Committee members. Thank you for showing your stripes and working hard to support our teachers and staff at TES. We appreciate you taking the time to hear from us this evening and hope you will be able to come to some of our end-of-school-year events.
That was the best presentation we've had all year. That was, that was, that was fantastic. Thank you so much. I would be remiss if I didn't comment how amazing you all look. You look professional, more professional than school committee members. Dr. Flanagan and Mr. Woodlock in there. You guys did a fantastic job. I especially liked how you ended it with your favorite aspects of being at TES. And you should be proud of yourselves. I'm really impressed. You all did wonderful. You must have taken notes from Nate with how you projected, and we could hear you all clearly. You did a fantastic job. I'm sure in a few years, one of you will be sitting in that seat. Great job.
They did better than me, I must say.
We agree.
Thank you.
Do any other members have any questions or comments?
More of a comment, if I may. There's a lot of adults, some of them probably sitting in this room, that couldn't do what you kids just did. That was incredible. And you are the reason we volunteer. And this is one of our favorite nights, is when each school comes and presents to us and tells us what they're learning. And it makes everything that we do and all the time that we put into this worth it. So thank you guys for, for being here this evening, and it was awesome.
And thank you, parents, for supporting that as well. It's so important to get to see these students, and we really appreciate that.
I don't know why I'm surprised because the elementary school is always the best prepared and the best presentations. It has been for years. I was all ready to ask you all what your favorite memory was, and you just told us. I didn't have to ask, so well done. Absolutely best presentation, I think probably in a few years. Just amazing. It just kept going and getting better, and well done by everybody. Teachers, staff are helping them prepare. Great job overall, thank you.
I just, oh, sorry. I just want to say that I know most of you guys in some capacity or another, and I am just continually impressed by all of you, and I'm so proud to see all of you guys talking tonight. Thank you so much, guys.
So I'll just make two comments. One, I've been doing this job for seven years, and that was the best presentation the chair's ever seen, so thanks for that. I appreciate that a lot. I thought it was great, though. We heard about the academic program, and we heard about the cultural experiences, we heard about the co-curricular opportunities. We worked in a little marketing, promoting Maeve's Kitchen and raising some funds. Speaking in public is certainly an important skill, and you are all just so phenomenal. You make us so proud, thanks.
We will take a recess, just so that parents can take photographs of their students. And I will seek a motion.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? So we are in recess.
So you sit there and smile because your parents could...
I will call the meeting back to order, and we can move on to unfinished business. 8A Superintendent Report.
Thank you. Boy, that's a tough act, that's a tough act to follow right there. They were phenomenal. I'm so proud of them. So upcoming School Committee Meeting Calendar, we have, next meeting is May 2nd. I'm sorry, annual town meeting is May 2nd at 7:00 PM at the elementary school. We have a School Building Committee meeting at 6:30 PM on May 10th. The election is on May 16th, so we are not meeting on that Tuesday night. May 23rd will be our next School Committee meeting. It'll be Nate's last School Committee meeting, and at that point, we'll meet next year's student representative to the School Committee. So that is what's upcoming. I was going to put the June meeting on here, but we're going to talk about that later on the new business.
Can I clarify, ma'am?
Sure.
Do we have a plan for the middle school for Election Day, as far as how that's going to work? Is that...
We do, we're fine. Yeah, we, so I'm going to talk parking a little bit, too.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
Superintendent Evaluation Timeline Approval. Dr. Flanagan, do you have, did you pull that up?
MSBA update?
Yeah, why don't we do MSBA update?
The kids were so off.
They did, yeah.
Okay, so yesterday, yesterday we had about an hour and a half design meeting with the, with the design team to talk about, really kind of dial in what the final design is going to look like and start making some decisions. We talked about signage and lavatory hardware and gym equipment and lining and striping options and logos and just a lot of information. It was a great meeting, it was a, it was a long meeting. They're asking input from, from two or three guys, Mr. Paul included, who have wives that dress them, so. There's a professional designer out there, so she's helping us through this whole process. So that's with that, I'm going to show you some slides in a little bit. Phase two fencing, as you can see, is installed around the campus. I will say that Monday was probably one of the most difficult parking days we've probably ever experienced on this campus. And what we realized, and I thank Mr. Ogden and his work, I think a lot of kids started getting their license over the winter and in the spring. Those numbers were never reported to Fontaine Brothers when we made the design, but it was less about that and more about kids attaining their license, not buying permits, and showing up. So Mr. Ogden resolved that issue. You're not allowed to come without a parking pass. We actually froze the parking passes at this time, and as of today, there were 27 additional or extra parking spots. So we were okay today. It was, it was a mess yesterday, but we're okay today. That being said, we do have the town election coming up on May 16th. So one of the things that we're going to do there is we're going to call it the Bagel Bus. And we've worked, reached out to Bhakta Samaj, the temple at the top of the road, and we will have staff members parked there, and we'll give them bagel and a coffee, and we'll shuttle them up here on our White Bruce Bus. So Bagel Bus will be in action on the 16th, and we will work with Bhakta Samaj. We also reserve their parking lot for graduation as well. So at that point, we'll probably reach out to D-Bus and maybe have a shuttle option for parents that are parking down, down there as well. So, so we have plans in place. So the back entrance to the middle school is still available, it's still accessible. So it'll be a regular walk-in and vote for all residents. And we're going to reserve that far parking lot to the best of our abilities, make spots as we can for that. Given that it's an uncontested election, I don't know what turnout will be. I encourage everyone to vote, but I think we'll be in good shape. So that is the parking update as of the past couple of days. Right now, work is really focused by Fontaine Brothers on cutting that road in off of Norris Road. The sooner we can get trucks off of coming through the middle school parking lot, the better off we're all going to be. They're working very hard on that, and I think they're probably still a few weeks away from that. They've mobilized, and they have their trailers set up out back. They're working to connect those with power and internet and those types of things. And those will be like the management trailers for the construction project itself. JCJ and Left Field will share one. FBI will have their own construction trailer. So that's the work that's going on right now. They're still doing the site work, and they're still pulling up pavement in the courtyard and things like that. So just a couple of pictures to share with you. The Jersey barriers are up with the scrim pretty much all around, anywhere that's student or human accessible. We don't have that green scrim on, in the back fencing on the field, it's a cost issue, but we have Jersey barriers and scrim up wherever people travel. That's, you can see here, that's the middle school parking lot and that drop-off lane. You can see how one line of parking was compromised, as well as the back. They probably took 25 spots off the back of the parking lot as well. So that's, that's part of the issue. And as you come in, with the front of the white truck is, you know, the generator is there, and that student parking lot is also blocked off with Jersey barriers. So that is now all construction site and not accessible to us. So this is, these are some of, these are some of the decisions we're making. Fortunately, this is the signage that's going to be in the school. This will be reflective of the seasonal theme that's going in the school. Each, each wing of the school, there are essentially four wings of the main lobby. The main lobby will be the neutral color, and then we have the winter, spring, summer, and fall color options. So we're, these are, these are the kinds of meetings we're having, where we're looking at what types of signage do we want? We'll go to the next one, please. We're making some decisions about neutral colors for the entryway to keep it light and bright. And if you look at the left side of this picture, you see four elongated panels. Those are actually acoustic panels, but there'll be some design element on those. So if you go to the next slide, please. Again, they're incorporating the, the four seasons there. So we're, we're looking at various options of what that's going to look like. So it's exciting to make some of these decisions. We're thankful that we have a pro who's only given us two or three options, which is good. And it's really a lot of details. But this is the fun stuff. But then we're sitting there looking at what type of soap dispensers, toilet paper dispensers, bathroom towel dispensers, all the other stuff that goes into a school. We have to make decisions on everything. We talked about AEDs, and we're actually going to go up in AED in this school. We have two AEDs in the high school and the elementary school. But given the community access points in this school, we think it's logical to have one outside the nurse's office, one inside the gymnasium, and we always like to have one on the second floor in the case of emergency. So we'll have three AEDs located in that school. So those are the conversations we're having and decisions we're making. So that's pretty much, I don't think I have any more pictures. That's pretty much the MSBA update. I do know that on May 10th, if you can tune in to May 10th or come to the May 10th School Building Committee meeting, I would, I would encourage that. We're going to have a lot of conversation about contingency and contingency funding and how that is really built into and part of the budget. And I think, I think it'd be a good opportunity for people to get a better understanding of it, that when we started this project with $12.1 million in contingency, that's not sitting in a bank waiting for us to draw down on. The contingency is built into each phase of the project to address and handle any overages. So David Sain is going to do a whole focused presentation in our OPM on contingency, contingency spending and what that looks like. So I would encourage the School Committee members to tune in or come if you can to that meeting. But that's pretty much the MSBA update at this point.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any questions for Dr. Flanagan, or we have the co-chair here as well?
No, I'm, yeah. Dr. Flanagan, answer them.
Mr. Woodlock? Teaching and learning update?
Thank you, yes. All right, so this week, I wanted to maybe draw attention to something that I think we, not skipped over, but we spend a lot of time talking about what the students are doing. We spend a lot of time talking about what the teachers are doing and professional development for them. But I don't want to overlook what we're doing with administrators and what they're doing to enhance their own practice. So one thing that I've been working collaboratively with Sarah Lewensik and building administrators to calibrate our efforts as far as when we go into classrooms, what are we seeing? And how can we make sure that, you know, when one administrator goes into a classroom and another goes into another classroom, that they're calibrated in what they're looking for, what they're seeing, and that the teachers are going to receive similar feedback for similar practice? That's really important. It's what we want our teachers to be doing in similar, like, for instance, in a biology class in high school. In another biology class, we want it to be something very similar. So we want the same with our administrators. So as part of that, we've been engaging in the past month in walkthroughs, and these are not just walk-in and just have a chat, like, they've been a real structure to them. So we talk before, we have some things that we're going to focus on looking for, and then we have a protocol to debrief afterwards. So all in all, it takes about two hours to do, which is a big chunk of an administrator's day, but, you know, we're not doing it every day. But it really is an important process, and the discussion that we've had after the walkthrough has been very rich and just really great. So we learn from each other. Some people see one thing, and other people may see something else, and be like, I didn't notice that. That's great. But we go further than that. We talk about, you know, what kind, and these are non-evaluative walkthroughs. So we talk about, like, what kind of feedback could we give our teachers? And so in that sense, too, we're hearing what other people are thinking and how they would phrase something or what they noticed that maybe we didn't, and we're learning from each other, which is a really important thing. We always talk, I always say, you know, the best professional development for teachers is the teacher down the hall. It's not untrue for administrators either. So we want to make sure we have those experiences. So we have done one phase of this. We've scheduled round two, which is happening beginning this week and then next week. And then we'll probably lay off a little bit because we don't want to overload the administrators in what becomes a very busy time of year. But I'm excited about this. It's something new that we haven't done as far as a structured protocol like this, as far as I know. So, so far, so good. And if you have questions, I'm happy to answer them.
What's been the response from the teachers?
I really haven't heard much from high school or middle school teachers. It's not like we said, you know, this is happening and made a big deal about it. But in discussions with some of the elementary school teachers, they were like, yeah, we, we'd love you to come in more, you know? So with that in mind, too, I've taken, taken them up on it. So tomorrow, I'll be spending an hour and a half in an elementary school classroom just to see what's going on. And, you know, as a, as an administrator who has mostly middle school and high school background, like, that's, that's an area I would say I need improvement on. So I'm really excited to do that, and so I'm doing that. And then on Friday, I'm actually meeting with Mrs. Maraca, and we're going to actually do a lesson plan together so that I can see...
Right, so I will seek a motion to amend the twenty-three, twenty-four academic calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That carries six zero zero. Thank you. And we already covered nine A, so we'll move on to nine B.
So, part of the challenges, Mr. Woodlock just mentioned, as we get to the end of the year, there are a lot of celebrations going on as we try to nail down what that last day of school is. There are certain things that happen generally two days before, three days before. One of these events is the eighth grade dance that's going to happen on Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. Seeing as though we have three eighth grade parents sitting around the table, I thought it would make sense to, oh, two eighth grade parents sitting around the table, I thought it would make sense to move the dance, to move the, not the dance, the school committee meeting from June thirteenth to the week before, June sixth.
I will seek a motion to update the school committee meeting calendar as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I just want to state that I don't plan on attending the eighth grade school dance.
Any other discussion?
Jeff, may.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That carries six zero zero. Thank you.
You know, I want to harass my own kid.
And the food service contract.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I teased this out a little bit at one of your previous meetings as to the process, but I did want to mention that in previous bid packets, DESI and USDA was always very prescriptive as to the language that they wanted us to include as we were developing our requests for proposals to send out for food service. I think DESI recognized many of us reaching out to them and saying, if you're so anxious to put specific language in a document, why don't you create a universal bid document for all of the school districts to use? They listened and this year was actually the first year that they gave us the proposal document with primarily locked with the exception of where we could add information unique to Tingsborough. It had not only the language that USDA and DESI requires, but it also gave us the rating categories to use when scoring out the vendors that submit packets for us. It gave us the rule of award as to what criteria you should use and then financially what criteria you should use on the award. It gave us a set timeline, all of which we had to submit to DESI for their review and approval before we put it out to vendors. So, we did all that. We got all the language, approved all of the Tingsborough items, implemented, and went out to bid with this bid packet. We did get three vendors that submit bid packages. Whitson's, our current vendor, Fresh Picks Cafe, and a company called Stockpot in Malden. We went through the bids. We had nine scoring categories that were given to us by DESI and we ranked these vendors based upon items such as experience, references, operations, experience, menus, planned marketing, financial stability, training that they have for their employees, as well as monitoring student participation. Scoring all three vendors on that, on those criteria, gave us two highly advantageous vendors, both Whitson's and Fresh Picks Cafe. And then when you have two highly advantageous vendors, the next step, next step as prescribed by DESI is to look at the guaranteed rate of return that each vendor will be offering to us. And based upon that, Whitson's gave us a guaranteed rate of return of one hundred and twenty-five thousand for the upcoming school year and Fresh Picks gave us a guaranteed rate of fifty-three thousand five fifty-four. So, based upon DESI's requirement that we go with the higher of the two bids, I'm bringing a recommendation to the school committee to enter into a one-year agreement with Whitson's with the possibility of four one-year extensions and to authorize the chair to sign that contract.
Does anyone want to move that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That carries six zero zero. Thanks, Mr. Masina.
Thank you. So, just in terms of next steps, the scoring charts as well as the draft contract will have to go to DESI for their review and once we get the approval, I'll have the contract ready for your signature.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Masina, you're still up.
Shift right gears here.
Finance.
For signing of bills, we had eight bill warrants presented to the committee tonight. I do have them all back approved. As always, in your drive is a list of warrant numbers, accounts, and amounts. For signing of payroll, two payrolls since we last reviewed, payroll of April tenth and April twenty-fourth. Again, the warrant numbers and amounts are in your drive. And the March financial package is also in your drive. That is comprised, as always, of the school committee's budget as of the end of March, the student account balances at the end of March, as well as the revolving account balances. And I will leave the enrollment to the chair.
Great, thank you. At T E S, we have seven hundred and sixty-six students. At T M S, we have four hundred and one students. At T H S, we have four hundred and fourteen students. We have twenty-five out of district students for a total of one thousand six hundred and six students. For school committee discussion, Nate, did you have anything?
Nothing at this time. Just great job to the elementary schools that came in tonight.
I agree. Jeff?
Same, just great job by the elementary students. Yeah, they were definitely very well prepared and did an outstanding job.
Mr. Woodlock?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Masina?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All set, thanks.
Just to echo everybody else, the elementary school kids did a great job. It's awesome.
Yeah, the T E S is just absolutely amazing, as always. I don't remember if I spoke about this last meeting or not, so I'll say it again. I want to thank Mr. Paula and all the chaperones for the D C trip. Absolutely amazing trip. Absolutely shocked at how jam-packed that itinerary was. I mean, they were up at six and not back to hotel till nine-thirty some nights, just museums and exhibits and it was an exhausting week, but I think it was a valuable weekend. You know, my daughter had a great time. So, thank you to everybody who volunteered to chaperone.
Just again, thank you to the elementary school students for coming out and their parents, but also a big thank you to our elementary school teachers who prepared those kids to make that presentation tonight. They do an outstanding job and thank you to all of them.
Yeah, thank you and congratulations to the extensive list of retirees coming out of the elementary school this year. I think it was about seven or eight retirees, so quality teachers and power professionals there and just great people, so wish them all the best in retirement.
And with that, we do have a need for executive session tonight to discuss the, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. We'll return from executive session only to adjourn the regularly scheduled meeting. The action requires a roll call vote. Is there a motion to move to executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Jeff?
In favor?
I'm in favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Thank you. We're in executive session.